Henry, you're gonna have to get matching masks for your outfits, just to be like stylish.
Good evening, everyone. There is a raised hand. Unfortunately, there will be a chance for you to raise your hand and be called upon during public comments when it is announced from the board chair. So at this time, we're gonna lower your hand, and then when it is the time to raise your hand to be addressed during public comments, we will ask you to raise it at that time. Thank you.
Yeah, just about one more minute before start time, and we don't quite yet have a quorum. Well, yes, actually, we do. Sorry about that. I keep forgetting there's two people in the boardroom. Okay, so we'll start on time in about a little less than one minute. Okay, very good. Here we go. The September 8th, 2021 Board Study Session Regular Meeting and Special Meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:30. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953 and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N2920. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. And I wanted to, as usual, thank those staff members who make the remote zooming in possible, and that would be Jeff Swank, Scotty Gonzer, Tanisha Jackson, Sargon Yardegar, Kim Gibbs, and Graciela Molina. Thank you for everything you do to make this work. I also want to acknowledge that we have five trustees zooming in for tonight's meeting and two trustees present with the chancellor at the district office. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members and the chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for 30 days in accordance with our board policy 2365. As a reminder, board members are asked to raise their hand via Zoom when they wish to speak, and everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. Persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to use the raised-hand Zoom feature. I ask trustees to mute themselves at this time, and if I could ask trustee Garrett to lead us from the district office in the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Garrett. And now we'll move to 5.3, which is roll call to establish a quorum. I would ask now the board's stenographer to conduct the roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. In addition to confirming that you're present, I'll ask that trustees also respond to the three questions listed in the agenda. Can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Trustee Nancy Hinton?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Antonio Aguilar?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Leslie Banks?
Present, and as you know, my Wi-Fi is going in and out today. Sorry about that.
Vice Chair Darren Garrett?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Milton Richards?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Jenny Nicolo?
Present and yes to all three.
And Chair Margie Boken?
Present and yes to all three. Thank you. We'll move now to 5.4, which is reporting out of closed session, and there is nothing to report out of closed session. Therefore, moving on to 5.5, which is changes in order of business. The board will wish the right to modify the order of business in a manner that is deemed appropriate by consent of the board. At this time, I have an interest in changing some order of business. And it will be as follows. We have a special agenda announced for tonight, and I will be inserting it just before item 10 on your agenda. And that special meeting includes item numbers 3.1 and 3.2. So for the sake of the trustees, I will be addressing those items just before item 10. I've been told that I can do that. I can insert it as part of the regular meeting agenda as long as it's been agendized. The second thing is that I want to pull items 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8, which constitute the meeting minutes of previous meetings in that we don't have them available for full review at this time. So I'd like to pull all three items to be considered at the approval meeting. And finally, I'd like to pull 7.1 because after consulting with the presenters of 7.1, that item is repetitive in items 9.2 and 9.3. So with the permission of the board, I will proceed with adjusting the agenda accordingly. Are there any other changes to the order of business?
So moved. Do you need a motion on that?
Graciela?
8.6, Consent Agenda Personnel.
Oh, right. I was gonna pull it when we got to that item, but we might as well do it. But yeah, 8.6. And I'll reiterate that as we get to the consent agenda. Aggraciela, does this require a motion?
No, if it's consensus with the board, we're good.
Okay, unless there is any opposition, we'll proceed with those changes to the board agenda. Moving on to 5.6, which is, oh, sorry, we don't have 5.6, 5.7, or 5.8. Wow, see how fast we did through that agenda? We're moving now to 5.9, which is public comments. At this time, I ask the board stenographer to first read aloud any public comments received via email, then introduce in real-time public comment requests. And please note, all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board minutes. Are there any public comments, board stenographer?
There were no public comments received via email. Currently, there is a raised hand by Dr. Erin Lucas.
Welcome, Dr. Erin Lucas. We'll put a spotlight on you. There you are. Hi. Thank you for your desire to speak during public comment. We do time the public comments, which are a total of five minutes. So I'll ask the stenographer to begin the timer. But right ahead, this is your opportunity.
Hi, and good evening to all the board. I haven't met a lot of you in person, so a little intro of me. I teach microbiology here at MJC, and I've been faculty here for a little more than a decade. And I have a doctoral degree in microbiology with an infectious disease emphasis. And I actually not only teach general microbiology to the pre-nursing students, I teach my pet project, which is a class called Plagues of Humanities. And I've actually taught that class way before this current pandemic. And so I have my finger to the pulse of this pandemic and all pandemics of the previous times, of which there were many. I put that out there because I want to say that, like, I was one of the first in February of 2020 to be like, hey, deans, you guys need to pay attention to this. This is gonna be a problem. And then throughout, out of 2020 and early 2021, I've been trying to be a part of the conversation of how to keep MJC safe, how to keep our students safe, our faculty safe, informational items about the virus and the disease that it causes. And I come here to the board today in the strongest language I could possibly give to support mandating vaccination for anybody that's gonna be on campus. That is faculty that teach on campus. I'm actually in my office right now because I am teaching on-campus labs for our allied health students. Anybody that's staff that is on campus and students that are on campus, these vaccines are safe. I've been watching them for years, and that includes back in the SARS one day in early 2000s and in the MERS day of 2012. And that's where this research started. So if people have questions about the vaccine safety and efficacy, you can ask me questions. I can help you find research, but I cannot recommend this more for anybody who's going to be on campus. This is how we keep our faculty and our students safe. This is how we keep our staff safe. This is how we keep classes happening during this Delta surge, and this is how we get out of the pandemic. So I really support, and I know a lot of my science compatriots support, vaccination mandates for anybody that's on campus. So please help us out. We want to be on campus. I love teaching my labs on campus. And I want to stay that way through this pandemic. So with vaccination mandates, I think that's the way to go. So with that, I don't even need all of my five minutes because I strongly recommend.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Appreciate you taking the time to give us your public comment. As you know, the board doesn't interact with the public during public comment. It's your opportunity to speak to the board, and thank you for doing that. Any board stenographer, any other public comments?
I do not see any additional hands raised.
Very good. We'll move now to item 6.1, which is a report from the Finance Committee. Trustee Garrett?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and my fellow trustees, district community, and the public viewing at large. So the Finance Committee met normally meet on Mondays, but because it was a holiday, we met on, excuse me while I update my Zoom here. Thank you. So we met yesterday, and we had some normal and customary items, which is the monthly financial update. I'm happy to report that we're at the same level as far as the expenditures were last year, which is good news because it shows that the district community as a whole still understands the value of preparing us for the future and saving those resources. So we're doing a very good job at that. Item two was an update on our FTEs. My fellow trustees, Dr. Richards and trustee Aguilar, had some comments of their own, and basically it came down to, all of us are concerned. Not only the trustees, but staff are concerned about the potential down the road for the Hold Harmless going away. There's a movement statewide to extend the Hold Harmless another year because if that doesn't happen and we stay on track where we're going, we could be looking at a 15%, 15% to 20% reduction in our state apportionment. So that is a serious, serious issue. It's gonna require, if that happens, some serious action on the part of all of us in the district community. So I can't say more about it than we really need to keep our eye on this and do everything we can to support the colleges to get our FTEs back up there and get our student success numbers up there as well. So that was item two. Item three was the proposed Fund XI or General Fund budget for 2122. I think Vice Chancellor Stewart and his staff, as well as the district, have done a good job of putting together a proposed budget. I'm not gonna go into it in detail. You've all been given that budget to study on your own, and the Finance Committee is recommending approval of that budget. Item four was an item regarding some unique opportunities for district-wide infrastructure, particularly in the area of energy savings. So the proposal was that there is state loan resources available where we can go out and borrow money for energy-efficient projects and like LED lighting throughout the district, some more solar panel arrays. We had some interesting conversations about that since our solar panel right here out the back of Central Services is not operating as it should. So we wanted to make sure that if that's the path we go down, to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck and hire a reputable firm that's gonna be around for a number of years, not like the one that built the one behind us because it's no longer in business. So that was really our concern, but as a whole, we support this concept and would support it if it came before the entire board for a vote. And let's see, five was the board policy 5035 in regards to student debt. This is an issue that the board discussed some months back. It's come back now to the Board Finance Committee, and it was discussed that a final number, that number right now is at $200, but the recommendation is gonna drop down. But the Finance Committee as a whole was very supportive of the concept of using the federal stimulus dollars that we got, and that would be perfectly legal to pay off our current student debt with those dollars and then communicate back out with those students through Student Services to let them know, hey, no harm, no foul. You're good. Please come back. We want you to come back as a student and further or finish your higher education goals. So we said that, and we support it. And we also said that we want to have policies and procedures in place so we don't find ourselves in this hole again down the road. So pay off the problem and then fix the problem so we don't find ourselves in the same ways that we've got ourselves into now. And I'm almost done. It was a busy meeting. Final was item six, which is our OPEB trust as far as the actuary. I've been waiting for a good actuarial report for a long time. So I'm gonna spend the next 30 minutes diving in. No, I'm just kidding. But anyway, no, our OPEB trust is in good shape. We were just given a high-level overview of where we're at as far as what the report said, as far as our funding status, what our discount rate is, our population, both active employees, retirees, all of that stuff was in there. If you want it, you can come down and use it as your reading pleasure over the weekend, but I'm just telling you, we're in good shape. We've been served very well by putting that money aside. The funding ratio right now is at a little over 99%. The benchmark for a pensioner OPEB trust is 80%. So we're way over that. So we asked that a recommendation come back to us for, okay, at what level do we say we're fully funded and we don't need to keep putting more district resources in there at that level until we drop back down below that level, and then we need to start putting money back into it again. So that's gonna come back to us as a recommendation. I'm gonna turn it back now to trustees Aguilar and Richards to see if I forgot anything. I'm getting the thumbs up. I thank you guys for letting me go on in a diatribe here. So I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Very good. And the board has been interested in the student debt issue. Thank you for addressing that. And always interested in other post-employment benefits and the status. So thank you very much. Well done. Moving on to the 6.2, which is Board Policy Committee Report. Trustee Hinton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be the last month that we don't have an actual report. But the one thing that we will be reporting is that we will be meeting a week later than previously announced due to the pushback of our regular board meeting next month.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Hinton, for that information. Moving now to reports and information items, we have skip 7.1 in the change of order of business, and we'll move now to 7.2, which is a presentation regarding the reopening and enrollment plan updates for Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. This section is typically chaired by the two college presidents, but I know that they rely on the health services support staff to fill in. So I'll go first to Columbia College. Dr. Java Harrypor?
Thank you, ma'am. I would invite Amy.
Amy Weber.
Amy, Amy Warren to share some information with us, and then I'll come in and then shout.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. I have a few slides. Thank you, Kimberly. So good afternoon, or should I say good evening, district board members, Chancellor Young, administration, and colleagues. Thank you for inviting me again to share what our communities are experiencing with COVID-19, and Laureen could not be here today. So I'll provide data from both counties. Next slide. So for Stanislaus County, the case hospital and death rates are high with the Delta variant as the dominant variant in our community. Case and death rates have flattened a bit over the last couple of weeks and even started to decline slightly. So that's promising news. But this will be continued, you know, to be tracked by our epidemiology team at the county. The case rate dropped a bit today to 44.7. So this is data from yesterday. That's on the slide. Today, we had 12 additional deaths reported. The county had 45 deaths in August compared with 18 in July and just nine in June. The county dashboard actually today just updated their format, and they're gonna be showing new vaccination data. So that started today. For those hospitalized, 87% are unvaccinated. Of those who have died, 91% were unvaccinated. So it's just more evidence that vaccines are working as intended. The CDC reports that if vaccinated, you're seven times less likely to contract COVID and 10 times less likely to be hospitalized. 49% of eligible Stan County residents are now fully vaccinated. The increase is threatening the healthcare system. On Friday, surge protocols were triggered, meaning that bed capacity has now fallen below 10% for three straight days. So as a result, Stan County issued a legal order to mask indoors in public settings. That started on Saturday. We're currently following about 50 MJC student cases from the last two weeks with 15 cases just added today. So these investigations may lead to even more contacts in the days to come. Next slide. For Toowalemie, of the 5,300 cases for the entire pandemic, 1,000 have been in the last month. So this is the worst it's ever been for Toowalemie County. Of the 96 deaths, 14 were in the last month. 52% of residents are now fully vaccinated, and Laureen is following approximately 20 cases and working with HR on staff cases. So the good news is that we're providing access to testing and vaccination on both campuses. So MJC is offering on-campus PCR testing for employees and students, and then through Curative, we have both services for the community. We're currently working on a partnership with Golden Valley for weekly vaccination clinics starting this month. And Columbia is offering PCR testing three days a week, and they're referring individuals to public health and local pharmacies for vaccination. Next slide. So I echo much of what Dr. Lucas mentioned earlier. We have a safe, FDA-approved vaccine, and the evidence is clear that vaccination protects you from severe disease and death. It protects others because transmission risk appears to be lower than if you were unvaccinated. A vaccinated community will free up beds so that you and I can depend on the emergency room to take care of our loved ones. Hospitals need to be open for general health conditions. We need to do better about encouraging vaccination and finding avenues to incentivize showing up and following through. In promoting vaccination, we're supporting our first-generation college students and others who have come to MJC for an education. They've signed up. They're ready. But if unvaccinated and exposed, they miss two weeks of school. If they convert to positive, they miss more. And how can they recover from that academically? I can't promise that they won't end up with long-term COVID or symptoms that warrant a hospital stay. And many of our students have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk. Increasing vaccine uptake will also reduce the Increasing vaccine uptake will also reduce the cost of testing and tracing. We're spending a considerable considerable resources, time and money on testing the unvaccinated on a serial basis. We're investigating unvaccinated positives and tracing their unvaccinated contacts almost daily. While there's a certain percentage who will never vaccinate and estimates from a recent public health webinar are around 14%, that's really not who we're trying to reach. We want to reach and meet those that are waiting, procrastinating, and maybe just wanting someone they trust to share information backed by science and truth. Uh, it's important to know that variants will continue to come as long as our community has large numbers of unvaccinated individuals acting as vehicles for COVID spread. We're going to see those numbers increase for hospitalizations and death. How will YCCD help the community stem this increase in transmission and hospitalizations? What's the new action plan? What's the new message? We have a responsibility to our people and public safety. We don't get to make the choice to put vulnerable people at risk. Our job is to protect them. So thank you for listening and for your time.
Amy, thank you very much. And to Lorraine, the board is really benefiting from uh, this regular data share and the information from your health perspective. Um, it's not an action item, so we appreciate the um, the information and 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 your list of strong recommendations. Appreciate it. Uh, GH, I'm gonna just bounce back to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, as far as the Columbia College is concerned, uh, we returned uh, full uh, the full staff in early August. Uh, early on, we didn't have many issues with uh, positive uh, diagnosis and prognosis, but now we've had a few cases in the offices amongst the staff. Uh, those uh, we provide some accommodation for uh, who have had some illnesses and they're at risk. Uh, we have provided accommodation for the for those ones. As far as the uh, classes are concerned, uh, we are about 10% down compared to last year as far as uh, enrollment is concerned. We've got 32 additional courses uh, scheduled for late starting classes. Uh, that we're, I'm hoping that between those and any positive attendance that uh, comes about by the end of the semester, we probably, we we can make some inroads in that 10%. But uh, down, we are down. As far as uh, spring semester is concerned, we are, as we speak, working on our schedule, spring schedule. Uh, the issue that we are um, grappling with is the vaccination and whether these students are going to be uh, exposed and how much of the, how many of these students are going to come in with positive or uh, to 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 pass the uh, the the virus. Uh, right now, because of the 50/50 sort of 50/50 online and uh, extended modality and uh, face to face, we've been able to move a lot of these classes into larger spaces so they can, the students can do this this dense, the distancing part. But we are still waiting for Cal OSHA and uh, California Department of Health and uh, and CDC to come in with uh, any other regulations that we might uh, have to uh, adhere to. Uh, so as far as the spring is concerned, we are waiting for all of that information to come in. Uh, given that we are able to switch between the uh, course uh, and teaching modalities, made uh, extended uh, modality or face to face. Uh, but if uh, Delta variant continues uh, wreaking havoc the way it is, there is a good possibility that we might have to stay with the 50/50 that we are or even a uh, more emphasis on um, extended modalities if the situation requires. After Shantin is done, I uh, we we stand for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Java Harrypor. Uh, Dr. Bonde Padiye.
Good afternoon. So our volleyball team is up five games to nil. And our football team first played a match, real game on campus in Oakland and they won that one too. I'm a little cautious that now we are supposed to be masking indoors in our next volleyball game. You would see a bunch of volleyball players with a mask and then jumping and striking the ball. That would be a pretty unique sight for us, but we will see how that goes. At least both teams would be equally hamstrung. On a serious note, that yes, we have a vaccine mandate for all the indoor locations. So that's going to create some issue for the athletics part of it. Um, as I said, good news is after a couple of scrimmages cancellation, we could get back into action. We needed four buses instead of two to transport our athletes to Oakland. But so far, so good. We are following the protocols in terms of testing them before they board the bus and so on and so forth. So that part is good. Uh, so far as enrollment is concerned, we did see the second week, typically enrollment is the classes begin, first week, we see the numbers climb because more students join. Second week, we see the numbers fall because students dropped their classes. That's a typical pattern. This year was no exception. We had those drops in the second week. And by the time we have, we have completed census over this last weekend, we are about 7% or so down. So uh, we would make up some of that because this pandemic continues to baffle us. We are looking for the seats. We have 3,000 students in the waitlist. So that's a demand supply mismatch that we are focusing more on how we can match the demand with the supply so that we can catch some of that uh, enrollments later through our late start classes. And all of our divisions are identifying core sections which can be started late and we would capture some part of that FTEs. Spring planning is a foot also, as I mentioned in my report to you, we are trying to provide some positive intensity for the incentive for those who want to get vaccinated. So that if they want to, they get vaccinated. If they're not, you know, we can only provide positive reinforcements. We are also going to have a so-called a vaccine party on the 27th. So those who are kind of fence sitters, if they can come and want to get vaccinated, takes off some load from us. So we'll provide the free vaccination clinic. Now, uh, I do not know how much of a party atmosphere we can create when we are poking people with a pin, but we will try our best. On the high school front, we are increasing our class sections offering in the next semester from 48 last time to 69 sections. So that's a significant increase that we are doing with modest city schools. And once we kind of get that model sort of perfected, we will roll that out into Turlow as well as serious areas also. A report is also in our mind, so we will go to all of those areas to see that how we can replicate this model and increase our high school enrollments. In terms of events, we are going to have an event of high school counselors, breakfast, lunch, get together this Friday. And that's where we are going to be sharing the information and kind of seeking their assistance because they are the biggest decision influencers for a high school kid. So we will encourage them that if they can put more students in our way, how does that look like? In terms of planning, we have uh, lots of stuff going on in the semester. So I will stop at that in case of any question for enrollment, FTEs or not.
Thank you. And I see that trustee Richards has his hand up. And before he goes, I wanted to acknowledge to both you and Dr. Java Harrypor and for the public to know that we get a report, a written report from both of you each board meeting. And I want to thank both of you for your upbeat report and the focus on recapturing enrollment. Really, really uh, uplifting reports from both of you. Uh, Dr. Richards.
So I want to commend you on being the athletics president with off to such a great start. But you did mention something that concerns me. I don't think it's feasible for a women's basketball player, a uh, indoor track and field, basketball. I don't see how they wear a mask when they compete. I I think that's a real problem. And I think the masks should be geared more towards uh, towards spectators. But I don't think you, I think that's a bigger health problem and I encourage you to look into that unless I heard you wrong.
No, uh, I I in fact, we sought specific clarification from the Department of Health. And they quoted to us saying that you are required to do that. It's not an option. They're not saying you may choose to or it's a decision left to us. They said because of Stanislaus County's rates, it is the Public Health Department's directive that all indoor activities will have to be masked. And that's a problem. That is a serious problem. I mean, not only for them, when we are having the weightlifting folks, as supporters have to be next to each other. And imagine what kind of sweat that's there. Even if we are just spacing out and all that, we looked around entire gym area. But yes, that's a huge issue. And uh, unless the Department of Health changes their their directive. And we had a meeting with them and they said that if you do not follow the directive, they have the option of coming and volunteering that entire facility or entire students. That's a they have a hammer.
You know, I I feel pretty strongly about this. Is this something we should go to the board of supervisors for? Because you know, one person made this decision rather than the full approval of supervisors. And I think it's a bigger health risk to be competing and to have a mask on, not be able to breathe. So I'm wondering, Henry, if that's something we need to help Shantin with and get more information because I I just don't see that working.
Well, I think, sorry. I think we can uh, ask for clarification from the County Public Health Department. And uh, remember, we, we have to operate under their uh, directive directions.
Very good. So we'll see clarification on that. Thank you for bringing it up.
We, we already sought clarification. Sorry. We already sought clarification and they are categorical that you have to follow the mask mandate.
Okay, don't worry about it. I'll handle it and we'll see what happens. There are others.
Thank you.
Any other comments to our to our two presidents from trustees? Seeing none, thank you both and to Amy Rebaran for her wonderful report each time and of course extending it to Lorraine as well. Uh, moving on then to Association Report 7.3, we'll start with Student Senate Activity Reports, beginning with Maria Marquez.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I am very happy to see you all this afternoon. So I'm going to start right away with my report for ASMJC. ASMJC had their ever first um, event on campus, which was Welcome Week. We gave out goodies and treats and we got to see students, faculty and some um, staff members on campus. ASMJC also ho- held for virtual Club Rush, where clubs gathered and shared information as well, letting students know how to get involved. ASMJC is also happy to announce that Flow officially started once again this fall semester, where we give out 200 Winkle cards each uh, Wednesday. We are also going to hold Virtual Remembrance Day on Friday, September 10th, where we're going to commemorate the lives we lost on September 11th. Also, that MJC is having their centennial coming up where we will open the time capsule. We will have special guests such as a birthday boy, Petey, and his lovely wife, Penelope. And just to congratulate that MJC is 100 years old. I would like to thank every single person that is attending this meeting. That concludes my report. I hope everybody is safe and enjoying this climate. Please let me know if there is any questions.
Maria, thank you so much and congratulations for your Welcome Week activities. I have a question I've been meaning to ask you. I I am so impressed with Flow and I know each board member as you, as as the student uh, uh, have reported over the years what you do. Is it unique to Yosemite Community College District to do Flow? Or or is that something that other community colleges do?
Um, where I'm aware, this uh, Flow started as a Senator project in MJC to give out um, free food on Wednesdays before uh, COVID. So it was pretty much food for Wednesdays for the students. But now since COVID hit, we were giving out Winkle cards so they can buy groceries. So I'm not very much aware of other colleges that do this. But it really does uh, did start it as a um, Senator project.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you so much to you and your colleagues, student colleagues for your service. So appreciate you. We'll move on now to Ricky Lee Corba from Columbia College.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for having me. Um, this first few weeks of school has been wonderful and full of unexpected twists and turns, but I'm so excited to finally work on campus again. One of the first things the Senate has made a priority is filling the YCCD Student Senate position. We are currently working with MJC to coordinate a special election and we've already started collecting applications. After speaking with the ASCC at our first meeting, the topic of a possible vaccine mandate was brought up. And the survey idea was presented to us. However, we didn't feel we had enough time to properly survey the students on their opinions. But my senators and I did speak with our students casually in our classes on the topic. And the feeling was pretty similar amongst the students with a split feeling with some students feeling very strongly that there should be a mandate and some students feeling very strongly that there shouldn't be. Within the Senate, we researched vax- vaccine mandates at other colleges and found that Columbia College at MJC are in the minority without having a mandate. The feeling in the Senate is very universal with that students should get sa- be safe and get vaccinated. Whether that comes from a mandate or encouraging the vaccini- vaccination of students from the form of incentives like gift cards or free things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky, and so nice to see you again and welcome back to the school year and thank you for that information. Moving now to our faculty representative to the board, Ellen McKissick.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Uh, the pandemic continues and that was brought home today to me. Uh, when I was teaching my augmentation class and I referenced a topic that normally quickly engages students and can be used to illustrate principles of audience adaptation and public policymaking. However, I soon stopped myself and asked about this topic, which was parking on East Campus, student parking. How many of you have never taken a class on campus? It was a substantial number. Nonetheless enough, East Campus MJC Parking Veterans were present to inform the discussion. I also referenced your, our, our board meetings as an example of making public policy. And they were interested to know that they can make their voices heard in the public comments section of the agenda. You might be hearing from some of the more opinionated among them. Speaking of public policies, MJC's annual Observance of Constitution Day came up. The students will be required, my students will, to be in the audience for the program on Zoom, which will begin on September 17th, Constitution Day, when a program and study guide will be released. And then on October 1st, Dr. Stephen Ruth, Professor of Political Science at Stanislaus State University and noted authority in U.S. Constitution, will be addressing a timely topic, constitutional issues related to public policy on vaccinations. As I mentioned before, our District Council has devoted considerable time and discussion to our district's ongoing response to the pandemic. District leaders asked that representatives of all constituencies speak to their members about issues relating to COVID response. This led directly to surveys uh, conducted by the uh, YFA and the MJC Academic Senate, as soon as it was practical to do so. You will hear the results of those surveys this evening, which we are confident you will give due consideration. Uh, as I heard a reference to our 100th anniversary, uh, it struck me that our our institution, as it began in 1921, uh, missed the last great pandemic by about four years, 1917 flu pandemic. So uh, we are truly in uncharted territory where we have to make our own course. We can't even look to precedent on this one. So uh, I know our board will do uh, the right thing after due consideration and careful study. And thank you again for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Ellen. What a timely topic on October 1st for um, Constitution Day. That is just really, really a great timing. Uh, thank you, Ellen, as always, for your report. Uh, moving on to number three, which is the Academic Senate Activity Reports. We'll start first with MJC Aisha Saleh. Welcome, Aisha.
Hello, thank you. All right. Hello, everyone. Board of Trustees, Chancellor Young. It's great to see all of you today. Uh, our fall semester has begun in earnest and MJC's Academic Senate has now had its first meeting of the academic year. We accomplished a lot, including the first reading of Resolution F21A, reaffirming support for our refugee and veteran students, which recognizes the importance of serving and supporting our Afghan refugee student population who make up about 35%. who make up about thirty-five percent of our English learner program and our veteran student population, both of which were impacted by the current events in Afghanistan. Also approved for first read were the plan for these modalities in the online education plan, the process overview for credit for prior learning and the accreditation midterm report. We also made plans for future meetings to address hiring prioritization and guidelines for webcams, video recording and remote proctoring. Program reviews in full swing at MJC with a deadline of September twelfth. I'd like to recognize the immense amount of work and reflection done by faculty during program review. Requires meaningful cooperation and a lot of time and energy, uh all of which can be particularly difficult during one of the busiest times of the year, the start of fall semester. And that difficulty is compounded by both the stress and restrictions needed to stay safe while working during a pandemic. The pandemic and its impact on faculty has also been a topic of discussion. As the Academic Senate President, I was one of the faculty leaders across the district that was encouraged to consult my constituents in order to be able to accurately represent the majority faculty consensus regarding the desire for a fact vaccine requirement to the board. Uh my position has also led to me being approached by individual faculty for months who have expressed their concern and frustration at the lack of a district-wide vaccine requirement that would allow them and their students to work more safely and successfully on campus. The frustration I've heard has grown immensely as faculty have watched the CSU and UC systems implement vaccine requirements. The K twelve school systems throughout California require either vaccination or weekly testing. And they're consistently seeing a growing number of California Community College Boards implementing vaccine requirements at the urging of the state chancellor calling on local action. In an effort to gather more conclusive data and uh conclusive data and an inclusive faculty voice, I had MJC faculty surveyed. Uh Lana today is gonna be presenting a more detailed report of Columbia's survey findings. While I'm going to be giving a preliminary overview of MJC's survey data, I will present more detailed findings and some submitted faculty comments at future board meetings as I continue to process the data from the survey. What I can report today is that the full and part-time faculty at MJC were surveyed regarding whether they would support board action on the implementation of a district-wide requirement for faculty and students to either show proof of vaccination or weekly PCR testing, which is in line with the recommendations made to the board by the Health Services Departments at MJC and Columbia College. Eighty-one percent of full-time faculty and twenty-one point five percent of part-time faculty responded to the survey. And a huge majority of nearly eighty percent of faculty are in support of board action in the implementation of a vaccine requirement or weekly testing. I will continue to review the survey results and comments submitted by faculty and will provide the board with additional details that highlight the voice of faculty at future meetings. I look forward to continue working with the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor to enable MJC to have a safe and productive academic year where we do our best to serve our students and community. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Aisha, thank you and and really for uh your willingness to share with the board your um your information gathering. It it really helps us. And so um the more information you have about any topic, right, the better decision you can make. And while the board has not agendized this item, we're of course very interested in what uh your report yields. And so um thank you. And and we look forward to your next report to hear more details and 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 hopefully maybe be able to get our hands on on something that we could reflect on as well. I I can't tell you how much it it really means to for you to have started that on your own and to be willing to share that with the board. Really appreciate it. And look forward now to Lana, who's going to share probably similar uh information as you suggest suggested. So Lana from Columbia College, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Um with your permission, I'd like to share my screen. I've got just a few little slides for you. Um and I have been having some connectivity issues today, so I'm really hoping my Zoom will hold. Hold Zoom, hold, please. Okay, so let's see.
I think your bandwidth is low.
So. All right.
Yes, I just share what I what you've provided me.
Please do. And I might just say next, 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 as I um go through here. Thank you, Graciela. I appreciate it. Okay, so let's see. Now I have to look at, oh my gosh, anybody else have the problem of just too many screens all at once? All right, well, as as we're getting um screen sharing started here, has I keep hearing from uh faculty is like, yeah, you know, these first three weeks of the fall semester, by God, it's been the longest year ever. Um so much, so many things going on. There we are. Great. Thank you so much, Graciela. I'm ready for the the next slide. You guys know who I am. All right, so we've got a bunch of things happening at Columbia College. We're working on our faculty hiring prioritization process. Um we have an unusual number of faculty retirements this year. I'm not sure what to chalk that up to. Um I do wonder if if it isn't at least in part for, you know, pandemic-related exhaustion of, you know, I'm I'm at the end of my career maybe and um but teaching online and switching modalities is a great burden of faculty. It takes a lot of time. Uh or maybe it's the golden handshake offered. Not sure, but we're trying to roll out a few new options, some combo positions, things ranging from ethnic studies to Spanish to art to music. So we've got all sorts of things in the process of this faculty hiring and we want to stay focused that this is about the next thirty years, right, way past all of our time. Um next thirty years, and we don't want to be short-sighted in how we approach those faculty hirings. Next thing we're working on, and thank you, Graciela, you are wonderfully uh predicting my next move. Um MJC and Columbia College, Aisha and I have been in weekly contact with each other saying, hey, what are the things that call it? Both of our colleges are working on. Uh one of the things we really want to approach together is a registration task force. So uh members of the board and community, if you haven't yet tried to register for our college, I highly recommend you try the process and see how frustrating it is. This is something that is a um unnecessary and low-hanging fruit fix to gaining more students into our system. For example, we really, it just should be automatic that a student who is registered at College A, MJC Columbia College, should very easily be able to take classes at the sister college. Registration is saying, hey, this is who I am. Well, if we already know who you are, why are we having students go through a second laborious process? So we're gonna work on that. Next, please. Uh we are working with our Presidential Search Committee. We've got faculty that are excited and engaged to be part of this process of finding a president that um is part of our community and really engaged with students and faculty and staff. And so the process is going well and we're really excited. We are continuing our work. I'm oh, oh, backup, please. Thank you. We are trying to continue our work uh with replacing everywhere that we see it the word adjunct with the words part-time faculty. Now, why would that be important? That's such a silly thing. Well, the definition of adjunct is nonessential, auxiliary, supplemental and separate part. And seventy percent of faculty are part-time people. This part-time faculty are not separate. They're not nonessential. So the word adjunct is is derogatory and needs to be replaced if we are going to show respect for our colleagues. So please help me everywhere you see the word adjunct. Let's work on fixing that to part-time faculty. Next, please. In other current Colombian news, I did, oh, go too far. Backup once. I did send out a survey with the big main question of would you support you, the YCC Board of Trustees, in establishing the requirement for all persons, faculty, staff, students, visitors, coming to campus, right? So this is not for online students, coming to campus to have either proof of vaccination or to have a negative COVID test with one within the last week. And folks, I take my job very seriously. That I am the voice of faculty and I want to make sure that I am accurately representing. So as a statistician, uh accurate representation is like the golden standard of like, if if you're gonna say anything, you have to make sure that you've got representative data. And we also really want to make sure that we have involvement um in our representation. So I personally wanted to send this this survey question to everyone at Columbia, faculty, staff, students, say, hey, this is something that could affect us all. We should all have a voice in this all at once. And then it was like, no, Lana, just you talk to your constituent group. Everyone else will talk to their own group. So I do have that information. And next, please, Graciela. Um it was an overwhelming response of saying strongly support, so strongly support. Um and I did go through and comb through all of the comments and responses. And I do have a little bit more of the information of things like um we had a twenty percent response rate from our part-time faculty. And I actually do want to note that, you know, as a statistician, I I want to make sure that I I am claiming what the weakness of my survey is. Um and I do think that there could be some under-coverage or non-response bias and that part-time faculty that are not teaching classes this semester, they're not checking their email and therefore we're not hearing their voice. Um so that that I I at least want to to talk about the weakness of this. I did have a part-time faculty reach out to me. It's like, hey, I got the survey because I'm checking my email. Um, you know, I I wasn't able to teach classes this semester because with the pandemic, uh I'd be in a really small closed room. There's no way for us to do distancing um and wearing masks. That's just not safe enough. And went on to say, I am a person that strongly supports vaccination um or negative testing on our campus. And Graciela, if you'll have the next slide, or not the next slide, just the next. This is a little uh word cloud of the words that faculty were using in their comments of yes, yes, yes. Please have vaccination as a part of our campus culture. Um we've got a precedent of there are other colleges doing this full vaccination. Oh, did I have a question? I thought I heard something.
We're just, we're, we're, yeah, we just, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So there is the precedent. A hundred percent of CSUs and UCs have some sort of vaccination requirement with the private schools and the community colleges not far behind in getting towards. This is a public health issue. This is not a political issue. This is a public health issue. Um and we need to lead by example and focus on education, set the standard of safety and be leaders in our campus and our community. And by the way, all these things, these are not, this is not my voice. I am the voice of the faculty. These are the comments from all of the faculty. Um there was concern that there the campus and district has had an underwhelming response to the pandemic and that um that's really sending a message of not holding the safety of our faculty, staff and students in very high regard. And that that really um struck me as as something that's like, oh my gosh, the the people that we care about the most don't feel that they are being cared for. Um that that the following the expert recommendations so that we don't have to make up anything new is really what faculty are wanting. But and um listening to the expert recommendations, this is why I surveyed faculty. I don't want to just have my voice. I want to have the voice of all faculty. Um there was a lot of.
Lana, Lana, I'm gonna, Lana, I'm gonna stop you there because I, you have to move on. It's gone a little over time. But I I if you'll wrap up um your presentation because I I so appreciate this data and we'll get it and and you'll continue to share it, but I just need to move it on.
Uh sure, my my last comment on this is those that did say something about not supporting, um all of their comments were saying we need to make sure that we have options like testing or continuing with robust online options um and and making sure that a natural immunity is also studied. If you'll go to the last slide, I just want to give you an update that Joe Manlove, our coworker that was injured, is on the road to recovery. He had an experience in the hospital where he had to sit in the waiting room for four hours, even though he was septic, waiting for a bed because the hospital was overflowing and that was really scary to us. But thank you so much for your time and I apologize for going over. Um any questions that anybody has, I welcome via email or message.
Lana, just like with Aisha, I mean, this information and data collection that you are providing um obviously becomes part of the board minutes, but the board really, really is interested in whatever information gathering that that you're doing so that we can add it simply to the information that we're aware of. Lana, thank you for for all of the information you've shared. We'll move now to the Leadership Team Advisory Council, Julian Daly.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Board, Chair, members of the Board and Chancellor Young. Um, well, as you now realize, uh at District Council last month, the leaders of the constituency groups were encouraged to poll their members in order to let the board know where they stood on mandating students and employees to either be vaccinated or to go through weekly testing. YCCD is currently one of the remaining three districts up and down the Central Valley that has no such vaccination mandate. Out of the eighty-seven leadership team members, seventy-four responded to the poll. The results are fifty-four in favor of a mandate that requires employees and students to show proof of vaccination or undergo weekly testing and twenty against. As President of the Leadership Team, I therefore strongly encourage the board to follow other Central Valley Community College districts in protecting our employees and students by approving a vaccination mandate that also allows choice through weekly testing. And then the rest of my report tonight, um I have two stories to share from leadership team members um about overcoming obstacles in the first few weeks of fall semester in order to serve and support our students. And the first one is from Amy Irbaran, who spoke earlier tonight. So uh this is about the MJC Pirates Pantry Team, which has gone above and beyond this fall to make sure MJC students continue to have access to a variety of nutritious foods. Second Harvest Food Bank supplies the food and Jonathan Arias mobilizes his team to box the food for drive-by distributions, but he has now, just this fall, instigated student appointments. And if transportation or schedule barriers exist, Jonathan and his team will drop off food boxes. For example, Jonathan writes, we have a student that was not able to participate in the past due to her work schedule and transportation issues. We now provide accommodations for her and her family by delivering her food supply directly to her place of employment. The student has shared great gratitude and knows she can count on our help in times of need. And so that example comes from MJC and um how we've navigated on the needs of our students. And then the second one comes from Amy Nielsen, who's the Director of Community Outreach and Development up at Columbia College. And she shared um what's been happening with the Columbia College Promise Program. So she wrote that more than two hundred and ten incoming freshmen so far have made it into the Columbia College Promise Program as first-time full-time students and they have earned a three hundred dollar per student welcome bonus from the Columbia College Foundation. It's been a great team effort. Our student services, financial team, research and foundation staff work closely to connect with our incoming and potential Promise students, mostly first-time freshmen who have just graduated from local high schools. We've been working very hard in the last few weeks through two campus closures and the steep rise in COVID exposures to help students qualify by this semester's drop deadline. This means each student met with a counselor for approved ed plans, completed orientation, completed Fast Food Dream Act applications and are enrolled as full-time students. They're all set for a great start. Go. They're all set for a great start. Go Jumper's. So it has been a challenging first few weeks. Many of our staff are on ADA accommodation. Many of all experienced the same thing with the merry-go-round of staff out due to exposures and then they come back and then another staff member is going out. So it it continues to be challenging. But we're overcoming those challenges and making it happen. So, thank you.
Wow, Julian, thank you for sharing those two stories. And you and I and the board and everyone else know there's so many wonderful stories like that.
I had to narrow down.
Thank you. Yeah, it's thank you for doing that. Appreciate listening to those. Moving now to Yosemite Faculty Association President Dimitri Karayotis. Dimitri, greetings.
Greetings, Chair Balkan, Trustees and Chancellor Young. The YFA membership recently voted on the tentative agreement and I'm pleased to report that ninety-seven percent of the large number of members who voted voted in favor of its ratification. We were recently asked to poll all faculty on the issue of mandating vaccines or weekly testing at YCCD. The YFA poll involved one question, which read, do you support the Yosemite Community College District implementing a vaccination/weekly testing mandate for all employees and students? Yes or no? Seventy-two point one percent of the full-time faculty voted, twenty-five percent of the part-time faculty voted. Overall, seventy-three percent favor mandating vaccines or weekly testing. This poll also included a comments box. Many faculty commented. Please let me know if you'd like to see the comments. On page seven of the 2021-2022 final budget, there is some misleading language that concerns YFA. It is inconsistent with the tentative agreement. The YFA membership recently voted to ratify a tentative agreement that emphasizes the district and YFA negotiation teams exploring creative solutions. The language in this part of the 2021-2022 final budget suggests one solution, cost sharing. I hope the board understands our reaction to this language and considers revising it. I want to reemphasize, the YFA is committed to negotiate in good faith, which, as mutually agreed upon, again, involves exploring creative solutions to the benefits issue, such as working benefits increases into the budget structure or using COLA or setting aside some of the undesigned fund ballots, to name a few. I remain optimistic that district and YFA will collaboratively meet this challenge. I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. I for one would be interested in those comments, but if you wouldn't mind sharing them with the chancellor and then he could ask each board member who'd like to see those comments. And thank you for that information and and the information about the YFA language. Appreciate it. Moving now on to number six, California School Employees Association President Roberto Reyes. Is Roberto there? Graciela, are you able to confirm if Roberto is present?
He was in the room. Yes, he is in the room.
Oh, there he is. There he is. Hi, Roberto.
Good evening.
Welcome. You're muted. We can't quite hear you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Boarded Trustees. Could you guys hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, everybody and Chancellor Young. CSCA concerns are how there are positive COVID cases around the campus and aren't being reported to staff until a week later you hear the case by rumor, rumor, rumor mill. Also, CSCA, CSCA say, how we are working hard and I'm giving my reports still on Zoom. Do we matter? CSCA asks for a better communication from the district. Thank you. That includes my report.
Thank you, Roberto. Appreciate it. Nice to see you.
Thank you, everybody. Likewise.
I wanted to encourage everyone who reported during this last session of association reports. If you're willing to share your data with the chancellor, knowing that he might pass it along to the board members, I think the board members would really appreciate having any any, as Lana says, you know, officials, you know, data that a statistician could, you know, approve of. So we would really appreciate seeing that information. It really helps. Moving on to seven point four, Yosemite Community College District Chancellor, his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments will be brief. First of all, I want to announce that the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty will expire at the end of this month as outlined in the Governor's Executive Order N dash zero-eight dash twenty-one. Unless it is extended, we will see the end of the Governor's Executive Order that we had used during this past year and a half. The next board meeting will be up in Columbia College and it would be in-person. And of course, masks and distancing will be in place. Next, I want to announce that the board had completed a series of professional development activities. First, we had Dr. Bryce Harris, former chancellor of the California Community Colleges, came in person to provide half a day of in-service professional development for our trustees. It was very well received and it was a great experience for the trustees to hear from the man who ran the state community college system. And of course, prior to that, Dr. Harris was the chancellor of the Los Rios Community College District. Next, just today, we heard from Dr. Catherine Webb, Vice President of ACCJC, talking about accreditation with an emphasis on standard four. And of course, the top of this series of professional development for our board, four of the trustees will be attending the ACCP Leadership Congress October thirteen to sixteen in San Diego. I share that because I want you to know, our trustees are committed to professional development and they're taking it seriously. Last but not least, Columbia College offered to house students who were displaced by the fires from Lake Tahoe Community College. And we received indication that fifty-four of the students would be coming. And I want to thank President Javaa Repol and Vice President Melissa Rebby, Vice President Brian Sanders and Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart for preparing to receive these students from Lake Tahoe to stay in a dormitory at Columbia College for the time being. However, we just received word that they wouldn't be coming at all. They would be able to return to Columbia College, to Lake Tahoe. But in any case, this gesture on our part demonstrates our solidarity and our empathy for the rest of California that is affected by the fire. We know that there are other colleges and other students who are affected. And so we wish them well. If there's anything that we can assist in any way, we would be glad to do so. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Henry, and for that information about Lake Tahoe. I'm glad to know the students are safe and what a wonderful gesture from YCCD slash Columbia College. That's great. Moving on to seven point five, which is Administrative Services Measure E Bond Update, Ann Judy Lanchester will provide a report.
Chair Balkan, Judy Lanchester was unable to make the meeting, so we can keep it as a point of information or we can have Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart.
I happen to know that the bond report, because we asked this, is not a requirement of the board agenda. So let's just keep it as an information item at this time for the board to review. Although Judy Lanchester's reports are always wonderful to hear from and we will miss her. But we'll move, the board has photographs of the Measure E update and also a financial report, quarterly expenditure report for fiscal year 2021 for your information. So we'll move now to seven, I'm sorry, action consent item section eight. And at this time, we are polling eight point six. And that is an item related to the board study session and regular meeting because we will put that in the special meeting just before item ten. So that would have been repetitive. So we'll pull item eight point six. And we have some slight changes before I consider a motion here, some changes to eight point four. Graciela?
Yes, if I may, I'd like to share my screen, just to share with the board the changes. Are you seeing?
Yeah.
A document?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is due to changes in the student roster for this course that is traveling to Western Fall Classic Livestock Judging Contest. There were two names that are currently on your agenda that are no longer part of the roster. And they are replaced with the three names listed here, Danielle Creekmore, Charlie Gray and Chancellor Ann Johnson. So wanted to seek the board's approval with this item amended.
Okay, very good. So it is possible to take items, consent agenda items, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point with changes, eight point four with changes, eight point five, not eight point six, eight point seven and eight point eight in one motion. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I trust you, Darren Garrett, move the recommended action.
Thank you, Trustee Garrett. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I trust you, Hinton, second the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Hinton. Roll call votes, stenographer.
Thank you. Let me just switch screens. Give me one moment. Thank you for your patience. Trustee Garrett?
Hi.
Trustee Beggs? Thank you. Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Trustee Beggs. Trustee Aguilaj?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Hi.
And Chair Balkan?
Hi.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to section nine, first item is nine point one, the 2021-2022 Yosemite Community College District Final Budget. We have two, well, not actions exactly, but first we open a public hearing before we go to the action items. So I'd like to open the public hearing for the item nine point one at six forty-eight. In the public, which is to speak. Seeing, for stenographer, is there any raised hands that I don't see?
I don't see any.
Thank you. Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing at six forty-nine. Now moving on to the action. The the budget is before you. There's a long description in your agenda regarding the budget and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this budget. And the recommended action is to adopt this district budget 2122 as attached with one revision, which I'd like to suggest. And that revision come, or to ask that the chancellor work with staff to publish this revision, the recommended revision, what I'm about to say, as part of the posted budget. And it has to do with the narrative, which is on page seven, paragraph two, beginning with the sentence, "The district contribution." I would like to recommend that those two sentences simply point to the tentative agreement and thus MOUs between the associations affected by this statement, that they simply point to the language in those agreements. And so with that change, the recommended action would be to approve this 2122 budget as attached to the September eighth agenda with that change and authorize the staff to prepare and file the necessary annual financial budget report, CCFS 311, with the required agencies.
Madam Chair, I trust you, Darren Garrett, move the recommended action along with the recommended changes to the narrative.
Thank you, Trustee Garrett. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Nicolau. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Madam Chair, Garrett?
Hi.
Trustee Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Aguilaj?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
I think his computer died.
Thank you for that. I'm on a different screen. And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is six zero with one not present for vote.
Graciela, you forgot me, but I.
I'm sorry. Trustee Nicolau?
Hi.
I did skip over you. My apologies.
Very good. Could you report out the final vote on that? Just to, could you report it out one more time?
So the vote is six zero with one not present for vote.
Thank you.
Which is, Trustee Richards?
Thank you. Moving on to nine point two, we have, actually, nine point two and nine point three. There, we're first, the same sort of item, it's the midterm report. But we'll start first with Columbia College. This is a first reading, which is attached to the September eighth 2021 agenda and is being presented to the board as a first reading. This report is moving through the review process, which includes constituency group review and feedback and edits and from constituents will be incorporated into the second meeting next month. So this is an important opportunity, both for Columbia College midterm report and then the next item under Modesto Junior College for the board to give feedback. So we'll start first with nine point two Columbia College Midterm Report. Dr. Brian Sanders?
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to just present to you the report that we worked really hard on over the past year plus, putting it together. So I don't, I can't walk you through a fifty-one-page narrative, item by item here. So I just thought I'd see if there's any questions and concerns, things that we need to address between now and we bring it forward to you next month for that second reading, just as a. Just as a reminder, between now and then, our academic senate will be voting on the document, our classified senate will be looking at it, college council has a first read and a second read, and throughout this process, we'll continue our edits as needed, so are there any questions?
Thank you, Brian, I, there may be, I'm sure that there might be some feedback, but on behalf of the board, I mean, this is, as Aisha said, this is just a really remarkable effort. And so I want to acknowledge your service, and I've worked with you before on an accreditation document as a community recipient, and so impressed with your work, and what an incredible feat this is for both you and Dr. Zilette to undergo for both colleges. So just on behalf of the board, we recognize this is just a ginormous undertaking. And then also, you heard the chancellor say that the board has undergone a number of trainings related to standard four, including today and including on September 3rd. So I think that there might be some comments about making some adjustments to the report to align with what the board has accomplished in that area. So first I'll go to Trustee Beggs.
Thank you, and if my internet goes out again, I hope somebody can pick up where I left off. On page 17, about the last sentence in 3-point, the paragraph's under 3.1, there's a link to Policy Committee Minutes, and I went to that link and I didn't see that statement in the minutes. So, because it says a trustee stated that since the role of the board is to attend policy matters, she was striving to do so with care and precision, I'm guessing that's either me or Nancy.
That was, that was you, I was very much impressed with that, and so I wrote that as part of the narrative, and then I went back to the minutes and I did link that, I agree that the reference is pretty vague. You know, we could remove that reference link if the document doesn't really support anything, but-
It doesn't, I mean, you could probably find it in the meeting, the YouTube meeting, and say at whatever point in the meeting. Because, yeah, I thought it was maybe me, but you know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then, let's see if I can get to the right spot here. This, I liked a lot of what you had here on District Recommendation 3, but I thought that the final paragraph needed some tweaking.
Okay.
Because we did have turnover, but the turnover for us was people decided not to run again, or people moved out of state for jobs or whatever. And the fact that there has been turnover, I don't think is, should be linked necessarily to the trustees. So anyway, if that, if that paragraph, I think, could definitely be rewritten, that final one.
Okay, yeah, I worked with our chancellor and the presidents on that piece as well to make sure that we reflected things as well, so we'll take that back and adjust it and bring it forward in the final draft.
Yeah, I want to chime in with Leslie, just to support that, because I think, I think when you reread the recommendation, the improvement says to order to increase effectiveness, the team recommends that the trustees act as a collective entity. So I can see why at first glance you might think, well, you know, there's been a lot of turnover, so there may not have been, you know, action as a collective. Where we really feel that the turnover isn't a result of lack of collectiveness. The turnover is more a result of just, you know, people moving around or not being elected. However, we wanted to be able to draw in there the information about the trainings and board development that has happened, and I know that the chancellor's collected those dates for you. So I just wanted to chime in, I agree with Trustee Beggs on, on, not that it's not exactly factual, it's just that it doesn't really go well with Recommendation 3. There should be more about, you know, what we've done to reinforce our collective. Sorry to interrupt, but this one, but, well, had, Trustee Beggs, anything else?
You might want to mention that we used Clifton's strengths, because one of our strengths as a board is that we recognize our different skillsets and our different areas of interest and our different strengths, but we work together really well, even though we often disagree on issues, maybe not even often, but we do disagree on issues or the best decision to go with, but we have never had a problem working well together in spite of any differences. And I see that Milt has a hand up.
Yeah, go, yeah, thank you, Trustee Beggs, Trustee Richards?
I had a technical problem and missed some stuff, so if I'm on the wrong one, let me know. But I believe it was page 23 where they actually showed the voting records of the trustees. And then I thought later on, there was an inference that because we don't always vote 100% together, we're not as good a board. And the first question is, why is that information in there? And second, if that's in fact an inference, I find that very offensive, because this is America, and we disagree, and having 100% agreement would tell me that we're communists and not Democrats. So I don't quite understand why that's in there. If I'm on the right one, Leslie, am I on the right one?
Yeah, well, that's a supporting document that's further down, and I agree. I don't, I don't think voting in lockstep is a sign of being a good board, although I'm sure some people prefer it.
And I would respond just by saying that that's not the expectation of the commission, that there's a unanimous vote on every item, and I think that was covered well in the training that you experienced today with Dr. Webb. On the other hand, what we're supposed to do with our midterm report is to provide a document that tells the story and that's backed up by evidence. And so it's very difficult to provide evidence of something that is not happening, right? Because the concern was about potential conflict and a lot of, not a lot, but whatever quantity of negative or non-agreement amongst board members was a characteristic that they were concerned about. Well, how do you demonstrate that that's not a concern, except by saying, well, you know, we look at the voting, it seems like there's a document that we can put together that illustrates that, you know, by and large, other than us being Americans and voting differently on some things, we pretty much have a board that votes collectively. And then I think the other piece of it is not so much the voting record, but it's how we proceed after those votes take place. The commission doesn't expect that there's unanimity, but they expect that the board acts as a collective and supports it. So I know in my workplace, there's things that I don't agree with that happen, and yet I walk out of my administrative realm and carry those things forward and say, well, this is what we're going to end up doing as a procedure for our college, so.
But you're not, you're not an elected official that is accountable to the voters, and not you, not the board, not, not the college. We have a right to voice our opinion, and it's very possible that there could be an issue where it goes one way, and then if someone's asked, it's very possible that I would say, well, I don't agree with it, but I accept the majority, so I just, I don't like that part, and I ask you to rethink how you write that part. And I know what the accreditation thing says, but I don't believe in that either. Where it said that once a board's decision is made, it's made. I'm never going to abide by that, I'll always say what I believe is right, underlining it with, we have, this is America, and we're ruled by consensus, and just because I don't agree with it, I support the decision. So I'm very uncomfortable with that, because I just get a sense that they're trying to ram that down our throats, and I won't accept that. So I just leave that for you, you do what you want with it, but that's just how I feel.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Richards, Trustee Beggs?
Brian, I was just going to say, another place you could maybe get some data that you could use or some documents would be the board self-evaluation, which is public, because there are comments in there that speak to that issue. And I, and I think you might find some helpful, a paragraph or two in there, just in the comments from board members and how we rated certain things that would work well on that, on that issue.
Okay, that sounds good.
I do want to say it's very well-written, and please don't take my comment as I don't like the report, but that just, that hit a nerve, because we've had that discussion before.
Okay. All right, I'll work with Chancellor Young and the college and district leadership on revising those. Maybe I should mention at this point that, you know, those two sections that we're talking about are both district recommendation issues, and so when Jennifer comes forward, I think we can expedite the conversation, because we pretty much have the same text in both areas.
Right, we saw that.
Very good. Yeah. You took the words out of my mouth, and I know Jennifer's listening, so she'll, it's really the same. So, but we took Columbia College in alphabetical order. Very good. Other comments from board members for Dr. Sanders about the interim report for Columbia College. This is a first read, it's not an action item, but he has taken note of your suggestion. Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Sanders. We'll move now to Dr. Zilette for item 9.3 for Modesto Junior College, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Balkan, and good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I now owe my colleague Brian a steak dinner for stepping out in front. All of this, as was mentioned, these two sections are in common in both of the reports, and so we will work on those together. I do want to remind the board that the midterm report is not a compliance report, it's just an update. And it's where we are now as compared to where we were then and what we're doing with regard to the actions, the items for improvement. And so this is definitely a collaborative item, and as an English major, like every other English major will know, Chair Beggs, once you write a text and you put it out into the universe, you certainly no longer own it. And so this is the district's and the college's documents, so thank you for your input, and we will definitely be collaborating on those two sections in particular. So one thing I would like to say, as I opened the conversation about Modesto Junior College's midterm report, I was very happy to see the board's goals, because item 2 and 3 in the board goals for next year actually are encompassed in our Quality Focus Essay Action Project 2. And being one of the 20 guided pathways colleges for the state, we are now in our second iteration of guided pathways. And if, may I share my screen, Graciela, very briefly? Do I have that function?
You have the functionality.
Thank you so much. So on the draft, if you have it electronically, everything is hyperlinked. And so if you go to the table of contents, you can see, what I would like to show you is our Action Project 2. In so many of these reports, we start out with data and charts and tables, and numbers are so impersonal, that everything that we do is about students. And I wanted to start this section with the perfect example of why we're doing guided pathways and why this project about surround supports for students is so very critical. This story might feel extreme if you're in a seat of privilege, if you have cultural capital, if you have a steady job and those things, this might seem like it's a rare event, but it's not a rare event on our campuses. So the, this is an actual email that happened. Fall 2020 semester began on Monday, August 24th, and one week later, on August 31st, at 5:10 in the morning, four professors received the same email, the subject, "First Week of School/Concerned." This student wrote to explain why she missed the first week of class, and she was pleading her case. She has three children, describes trying to teach them while going to school, and in the last month, she lost her grandfather, her uncle, and her brother to COVID. She then shared with her teachers that the 24th, the first day of school, was her birthday. She didn't have money to get her books, and she didn't have a car. She said, quote, "This month by far has been the worst for me. I really am trying to pull through this and get it together, but I can't seem to wrap my head around this hurt and pain that I feel inside. I had to reach out and let you guys know what is going on with me. I promise not to let you down, and I hope you guys can understand and forgive me," end quote. That is a quotation from her email. We have a student who has lost so much, asking for our forgiveness, as if she has done something wrong. This email mobilized an entire team instantly. Our embedded counseling and surround support services activated counselors, success specialists, faculty, health services, and deans in every school in which she had a course, ensuring that the student was immediately connected with book vouchers, a free bus pass, Pirate's Micro Grant, which is emergency funding, CARES funding, mental health support, Pirate's Pantry Food Assistance, and academic counseling. This single mother of three successfully persisted through the semester, not because it was easy, but because she now was surrounded by a team of people who knew her challenges and were prepared to assist her. This is what we're about. Every student in her situation is why we do these quality focus action projects. It's why we examine our data, it's why we try to figure out who we are and who our students are. All those numbers and charts are students, and I really hope that we never ever forget that. One thing I'm so incredibly proud of, the faculty and classified professionals at MJC and the administrators to support them, is that through so many challenges over the last four years, we have successfully implemented our whole first iteration of our guided pathways plan, and we're on to our second iteration. Without that persistence as an institution, and without that institutional resolve and grit, we wouldn't have been poised to help that student. And so I know this is about the midterm report, but to me, the things that provide all context to those numbers are the people who those numbers affect. And so one thing I would like the board to understand is that without students like her, there's really no reason for us to be doing all of these data explorations without the students. There's no reason for us to be here. And so as long as we keep the students at the heart of all of our continuous quality improvement and the heart of all of our examination, then I think we're going to be doing the right thing. One thing that I found, and then I'll open it for questions, as I was working to prepare this report, I realized that my institutional memory kind of stopped at the beginning of COVID. It has been kind of traumatic for administrators. So much has been involved in transitioning colleges to online remote learning, to guiding faculty and classified professionals and supporting deans through all of these changes. It was hard for me to remember back beyond the pre-COVID days. And so as I went back and lived, kind of relived, our journey since the 2017 report, it was very encouraging. And so I hope that as you read through the reports, both for Modesto and Columbia, I hope that you find them very encouraging because of all that's being accomplished for our community and our constituents. And I hope that you find that in spite of challenges that would derail so many institutions and would discourage so many faculty and staff and administrators, and so many institutions would just fall to pieces, we have persisted. All the MJC and Columbia vote, we've persisted for the sake of our students. And so one thing I would like to point out on our accreditation page, if you go to the MJC website, there is Microsoft Forms, we have it open for anyone. As you peruse our accreditation report, if you would like to offer feedback, you can submit the Microsoft Forms, and it will come to our Accreditation Council for vetting and inclusion into, and so we're going to do cyclical edits of this report until it comes back to you for a final read. So I would encourage all of you, if you, if there are other pieces of the report that you would like to comment on, please feel free to join the community in submitting input on the Microsoft Forms. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zilette, especially sharing the student experience, you're right, it's the reason why we're here. Appreciate you sharing that and for this report. So you heard the feedback from the board?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you'll work with Dr. Sanders. Is there any other follow-up from the trustees on the Modesto Junior College report? Okay, seeing, I can't, seeing none. Thank you for the work that you're doing to prepare for this. And again, we had a terrific session with Dr. Webb today, so we're moving along, so thank you so much. Moving, those are, oh no, it's a first reading, sorry, we have no action. Okay, moving on to 9.4, Board Goals and Special Priorities. This, the board goals draft is in your packet. We tabled this item until, from last meeting until tonight, so that we could have a little bit more time to discuss it. And if I could ask Graciela to put the board goals draft special priorities on the screen?
Sure, give me one moment.
Sure, give me one moment.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you can enlarge it so that we could see. Okay, we're only going to be able to see, if you just scroll down, I think there's seven points or six. I have the copy in front of me. Okay, yeah, there's seven, yeah, okay. So these were the drafts that we had created. If we just start at the beginning, let me just summarize. Not that I need to read it to you, but the first one is about fiscal stability. The second one is about guided pathways, which Dr. Zillett and Dr. Sanders pointed out. It's good to have that continuing as a focus. Number three is about our C cap agreements. We'd like to see those increased because they really have an effect on enrollment. Number four has to do with campus safety. Number five has to do with fostering an institutional culture that creates a positive educational environment, et cetera. Number six has to do with everything related to COVID and making sure that we're using the guidance from the Governor's Office, the Health Department, Public Health, Office of Emergency Operations, et cetera, to help guide our decisions. And we heard a lot of great information tonight to contribute towards that process. And number seven is supporting the chancellor and colleges in efforts to be captured and increase college enrollment, which is really the board's overarching goal for our chancellor. And his goals is to really focus on a number of things related to recapturing enrollment, which really, you know, continues to assist us in being able to float our boat each year if we continue to increase enrollment. So any recommendations from trustees on these goals? Go ahead, Trustee Beggs.
I'd be interested in what my fellow trustees think. I was thinking that Goal Seven could align with part of our priorities for the chancellor, which is to really improve customer service overall. And because I think, you know, when, if people go to our website and have trouble registering, as was brought up earlier, those are things that suppress enrollment and just make life difficult. And we don't want to make life unnecessarily difficult for people. You know, some of our subjects are hard enough as it is. And so if we can streamline the process of getting into classes and getting books and all of that, we need to do that. So customer, you know, I think other trustees have brought up that there are times students have contacted trustees and said, "Hey, I asked a question and I'm not getting a response and it's been a couple of weeks." And so I think that that's an overarching goal that we have and I'm thinking that could go, be folded in somehow with number seven. But I need to know what other people think.
Trustees, what's your pleasure? Thank you, Trustee Beggs, for that suggestion. So to reiterate, it's to fold into number seven, supporting the chancellor and colleges in efforts to recapture increasing college enrollment and to.
Improve customer service, I don't know.
We had something like that, I don't have the chancellor's goals in front of me.
I can.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Trustee Hinton?
I'd like to see us put something in. I was one of the trustees that received a call with a young man having difficulty in registering. It did get resolved, but it took a while and it was, it did get taken care of, but I think it was very key tonight when they said, you know, "Go to the website and be a student, try and register, see what the process is, see some of the issues that they're going through." So I think we need to take that seriously and look into ways to make the process easier for our students to go through. Because the young man that called me is, you know, he was an AP student and, you know, it's not like he didn't understand what he was doing, it just didn't flow.
Okay, is there a number seven on chancellor's goals or was there just those six?
It says six.
Okay, so I'm looking for the one about, well, really, I mean, it's.
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, Trustee Garrett, I think we can get as specific as we want with item seven for board priority slash goals, but I think it was left in its current form to cover a broad range of issues. IT and our website, our web portal, our registration system through that process is just one area. We have the issue of supporting the chancellor and the colleges, each college, with an increase in their PTOL budget to increase their advertising budget. I mean, there's a wide range of things, items, issues that fall into item seven. And we certainly, as a board, can come back later since the chancellor is mentioned in item seven of our board goals. I mean, it's our job to hold, as we heard from Dr. Webb, to get data, to get feedback, to find out if we're really following through on our mission and our goals as far as, as Dr. Zillett said, really ultimately serving our students. So for me, I like the way it is currently and it's broad language so we can encompass anything and everything we want.
Very good. Trustee Beggs, are you copacetic, as they say with that?
Well, I agree with Darren that it's broader than just customer service. But, you know, when we talk about recapturing, increasing college enrollment, that's really important, but sometimes it does, it feels like we're reducing our students to numbers and not treating them as individuals. And that's what I'm trying to get at, is that I want us to be sure that we're looking at our students as individuals and their entire process across the board. So I could go either way with this.
How about we add, how about we add to it and say, "Supporting the chancellor and colleges in efforts to recapture slash increase college enrollment through access and student success."
Ease of access?
This access. Increase college enrollment through access and student success.
Yeah, I can accept that.
Is that okay with you, Chancellor Young?
Yes.
Okay.
These are, I mean, these are our goals, so we can't get down into the, you know, the workspace to do this. So we need to support the chancellor in doing these things.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that makes sense to me. Trustee Beggs?
You know, it's whatever the board decides as a whole. I like ease of access, but.
If you want to add.
I still go back to the customer service thing, but it's okay.
If one word solves it, then one word is fine with me. I'm not going to die on the one-word hill, so.
Okay, ease of access and student success. Okay. Any other additions or edits to the board goals? I mean, sorry, and special priorities?
I like them all.
Graciela, you got that change there on number seven? Graciela there?
So we're saying improving ease of access and student success?
Oh, there, through ease of access and student success. Thank you, Graciela. I see it now. Okay, very good. Unless there's any other changes, I will, is this an action item? Oh yeah, it is. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Thank you, Trustee Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Beggs. Roll call vote?
Trustee, Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
And Chair Balkan?
Aye.
The vote is seven zero. Motion carries as amended.
Okay, so moving now to the special meeting agenda. You received a special meeting agenda separate from your board agenda, but it's available in board docs. There are two items on the special meeting agenda. The first one is 3.1, which is personnel transaction items and short-term appointment list. And the changes to that have been provided to you. There is also one additional change, and that's to a spelling of a name. And I apologize, Graciela, oh, here it is. It's, the spelling of the person's name is on page.
One of two.
Page one of two, under Appointment Academic Tenure Track.
Right, Ronnie, yeah. At first it says Erica Buck, that's fine. The next name down is Ronnie and her last name begins with the letter D, not C. So those are the recommended changes for 3.1. So we can take 3.1, unless there's further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Thank you, Trustee Richards. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I, Trustee Darren Garrett, will second the item, but then I want to have a moment of comment.
Oh, go right ahead.
Okay, as customary, this board, as always, and will continue to recognize the valuable members of our district who have contributed their professional lives and a lot of it, their personal lives and time to the success of the district and our students. And with that, we have a number of retirements on this evening. And I'd like to start with Antoine Atkins, 15 years of service, professor of nursing in our Allied Health Department at Modesto Junior College. Again, 15 years of service. We've heard all about COVID and everything. I just can't imagine the value that Antoine has added to our public health community over those 15 years. And I'm sure a lot of our students are providing valuable care right now. And so I wish her well in her retirement. Kimberly Bailey, 21 years of service, counselor, counseling and student services at Modesto Junior College. Another valuable position, helping students attain their goals, higher education goals through collaborative education plan. So I want to thank Kimberly for her 21 years of service contributing to our student success and wish her well in retirement. Odette Barnard, 35 years of service, financial aid system specialist, student financial services. Again, for our, in our district, our demographics, a lot of students are coming in seeking financial aid to achieve their dreams and goals. And in those 35 years, I am sure Odette has had just valuable service to those students in helping them get to their goals. So I wish her well in her retirement. Doreen Bass, 31 years of service, instructional support service, or excuse me, instructional support specialist, life science, biology, art sciences, and human performance at Columbia College. You know, Doreen has been active not only in her role as an instructional support specialist, but also in the classified senate. And so she's put a lot of time and effort, not only into students, but serving her classified peers and professionals at the Columbia College. So I want to give a shout out to her and wish her well in her retirement. Carol Garcia, 11 years of service as a custodian, facilities and planning and operations at Central Services. Again, right now, keeping our facilities clean, open, accessible has been a Herculean effort on all of our custodian staff with our classified professionals. And I want to thank Carol for her efforts over the last almost two years now for keeping us open and wish her well in retirement. Wendy Hess, 18 years of service, accounting specialist, college and administrative services, Columbia College. You know, we couldn't get through without the help of people making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and make sure that our paperwork is in order and making sure we don't find ourselves in trouble and getting the right data to where it needs to be. And I want to thank Wendy for her dedication and 18 years of service and wish her well in retirement. Jacqueline Jordan, 18 years of service, instructional support assistant, library and learning resources. Again, making sure that students have access to the right materials so they can prepare themselves for assignments, classroom instruction and everything. And that has been an involving environment over the years. And I'm sure Jacqueline has seen a lot of changes and has had to adapt to those changes in her career. And I want to thank her for her years of service at Modesto Junior College. Lita Love, 14 years of service, professor of nursing, allied health, MJC. Same thing as I said before and many times for our nursing professionals, right on the front line of getting folks through that process and providing those services for our nursing professionals. So I'm sure her students are right there on the front line right now treating COVID patients in our local hospitals. So I want to thank Lita for her 14 years of service and wish her well. Larita Passmore, 24 years of service, custodian, soldier, planning, operations, central services. Again, as I said before, very important in keeping our facilities accessible and clean. And I want to thank Larita for her 24 years of service and wish her well in her retirement. And I'm not going to butcher this name because I've gotten in trouble before for doing that, but Elizabeth, last name is P F L E G I N G, 10 years of service, counselor and attriculation officer, student services and counseling. As I said before, counseling is so important with those ed plans and helping students attain their educational dreams and goals. And I wish Elizabeth well in her 10 years, for her 10 years of service and wish her well in retirement. Jill Ramsey, 21 years of service, again, professor of nursing, allied health, as I've said before, hugely important and a lot of respect for those folks. And I wish Jill many happy years in retirement and thank her for her service. Richard Rivera, 25 years of service, professor of English. I should have Leslie do this, I'm sure she might know Richard. But Columbia College, 25 years of service, professor of English. He has had a wonderful career in educating our students in English and I wish him well in his retirement and thank him for his service. Finally, I promise, last one. Mary Ann Rogers, 20 years of service, custodian supervisor, facilities and planning operation for central services. I'm not going to be repetitive, but as a supervisor and having been a supervisor myself, you know, she's not only kept our facilities open and accessible during COVID, but she's had to work with her team in doing that job as well. And I want to thank Mary Ann for her years of service and wish her well in retirement. And I thank you, Madam Chair, for a little extra time this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Garrett. It means so much to all of us that you traditionally take time to acknowledge these employees' years of service. Very well worth it. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. I'll go for a roll call vote for approval of 3.1.
Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
And Chair Balkan?
Yeah.
The vote is seven zero. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move to 3.2, the last item on the special meeting agenda. This is for voting delegates to the ACCT Leadership Congress. In the explanation on this item, we note that the Yosemite Community College District is entitled to one. We have since learned that we're entitled to two votes during the annual ACCT Leadership Congress, which is the middle of October. And the following trustees will be in attendance. And it's from these four trustees that we would be selecting two people to represent, two of the trustees to represent the votes. The people attending are Trustee Beggs, Trustee Hinton, Trustee Aguilar, and Trustee Richards. Is there a motion to nominate two?
I, Trustee Hinton, would like to nominate Trustee Milton and Trustee Antonio. And here's my. And here's my reasoning. When I first went to the first conference, they allowed me to be the vote because I had not had the opportunity to do so. I was the newest person. And I know that trustee Aguilar was not able to go to the first meeting. So therefore, I'd like to see him have that opportunity.
I decline. I don't want to be the voting member. No, I'm not. No.
I think you sunk your ship earlier, Milton. It's by the will of a democratic process, so I'm going to, I'm going to second that.
I second that. Milton has to do it.
There you go. Thank you.
There's a motion by trustee Hinton, and actually I heard the second first by trustee Garrett. So we'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay, so trustee, so who's my first? Trustee Garrett or trustee Hinton?
Trustee Hinton was first and then trustee Garrett.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye, but only because I have no idea what I'm getting myself into, so.
Trustee Richards?
Heck, no.
Trustee Nicolau?
Aye.
And Chair Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is six one. Motion carries.
Congratulations, trustee Richards.
But I know, but I know trustee Richards will support the will of the board. I know that.
Exactly.
So noted in the minute, right now, in print. Very good, very good. Okay, moving on to board comments, item 10.1. Are there any future agenda board items on your mind? Doesn't mean that you can't recommend them at another time, but is there something on your mind tonight?
Madam Chair, if I may, trustee Garrett, I'd like to have an agendized item for the future on where we're at with the class numbering between Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. I'd like to get, I'd like to get an update on that.
Very good, very good. Other items that you wish to have on the agenda?
We've talked about having some sort of presentation on IT periodically just to help us understand how much goes into IT, which is, was always important. As now it's with COVID, it's amazingly important. And there were a lot of budget items this time about license fees, et cetera.
I think, I think she froze. But I think we heard her recommendation was an instructional information technology presentation. Very good.
And there is, there is something forthcoming. There is a report that is forthcoming to the board.
Very good, very good. Done. Check.
Great.
Any other items on your mind? Okay, moving on then to comments from the board, item 10.2. Are there any comments from board members? We'll start with, we'll start backwards. Trustee Aguilar?
Uh-oh, you caught me off guard. Okay. Well, I know we always, I don't know if I ever said this before, but I just want to thank one person specifically, because if it wasn't for her, I don't know what I would do most times when we have meetings. So I just want to say thank you to Graciela, because if it wasn't for her, I would be lost, so. Most of the public, I don't think they know how much, how much you do for the board. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very good. I'm going to jump around here. Trustee Nicolau?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett?
Other than just to echo what trustee Aguilar said, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Trustee Hinton?
Just like to add Kimberly in that, that the ladies in the office here with the chancellor keep us going every week, even when they do call us for special meeting. But they're always, they're always apologizing, but they're good. And they keep us, they keep us knowledgeable in what's going on.
Thank you. Trustee Richards?
I just want to say I've served on a lot of boards and commissions and I'm grateful to the voters of Stanislaus County because I'm really enjoying this and I really enjoy interacting with you all. And I don't have a lot of patience, but I've had a lot of patience with this, with this board. I've enjoyed the meetings.
Good, good. Very good. And trustee Beggs, it seems to have lost a connection. So I want to add, did I hear? It's trustee Beggs? If there's an echo. No trustee Beggs?
She texted to say her Wi-Fi went out again.
Oh, okay, very good. I wanted to acknowledge trustee Beggs. She's not on screen. We got a call, or the chair got a call from the Foundation Department at Modesto Junior College to ask the representative to represent the board to give the, one of the many welcomes at the Founder's Celebration on September 19th at 1 o'clock, which is a Sunday. And considering trustee Beggs' history with the college, well, so many of you, but I extended an invitation to trustee Beggs to offer the welcome, it's a two-minute welcome, on behalf of the board at the Founder's Day, and she agreed. And I wanted to thank her. I think that she's just the right person to give that welcome on our behalf. I also was very impressed with Dr. Bryce Harris's training that he provided us on September 3rd. And I thought that Dr. Catherine Webb today was very direct and succinct about standard four. And I appreciate that. And finally, I wanted to give a shout out to everyone and to the messaging that came out of Columbia College around the very, very frightening proximity of the Washington Fire that affected people associated with Columbia College. And it was so rare and strange to have the west side of Washington Street evacuated for many days. And it was quite a scare for our community, but I felt that the communication coming from Columbia College, from Dr. Java Haripour on down, was just absolutely terrific. And I wanted to give a shout out to them. And my hearts go out to those families that lost homes during the Washington Fire in Sonora. And that's the end of my comments. We'll move now to 11.1, which is the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Wednesday, October 20th. We made that change to accommodate the conference on the 13th that many board members are attending. And closed session will begin at 3:30. An open session will begin at 5:30 in the Manzanita Conference Room at Columbia College. And it will be in person unless the governor reinstitutes the order. And this meeting now is adjourned at 7:41. Thank you, everyone.